So, good evening, everyone. This is January 6, 2021. So, as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morris?
Yes.
Great. Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody and Mary Stone?
Yes.
Excellent. Brian Winner?
Brian Winner is present.
Thank you, sir. Town staff Martha Taylor?
Here.
Emily Noble?
Here.
Great. Anticipating speakers for tonight's agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Stephen Sawyer?
Yeah.
Thank you. Vincent Godin? Okay, maybe not here yet.
He's here, but he's...
I am here. Okay, great. Anthony Guba?
Bob Grasser representing him.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Gary Hubert?
I'm here.
Kevin Whitney?
Here.
Great. Good evening. This is January 6, 2021. The open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order supersedes requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, has posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board section of the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering "meeting ID" 832-7141-3056, or by calling 929-2056099, and entering the ID number which was just indicated, which was 832-7141-3056. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applications or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. So here are our ground rules. Permit me to just go over those with us. This will allow us to have an effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure that accurate minutes can be generated. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will put down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any common questions or comments. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone *6 to toggle to mute or unmute, and on the computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, click on the Participants button in the menu below the photo gallery at the bottom of the Zoom screen, hovering your cursor over this area. If you don't see it, a list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of the participants' area, you'll see an option where you can raise your hand. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed. The system lists in order who first raised their hand. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make comments. I will afford the applicant or his or her representatives the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list, those in the Raise Hand column, and again, afford the participant applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submissions, submitte of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant applicant representatives will be afforded the opportunities to speak if the issue raised have not been addressed. Finally, for each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call, and my Vice Chair will be certain to remind me of that if I do forget. So, that takes care of our open remarks, and I just do want to pull up the agenda over here. So give me a second to do that. That's located here on my screen, and that is the agenda. Very good. So, we do have some public hearings tonight. They will start at 7:15, which is in four minutes. There will be two hearings, so again, we'll probably try to limit our two hearings to 30 minutes each, just out of courtesy to the applicants and to the members of the public in attendance, as well as to our board members. Okay. With that said, I just want to say, it's a pleasure to start 2021 with this board. I feel very honored to be able to participate with you, and in light of all of the events that are taking place, it's wonderful to know that we can all come together as elected officials and do the job that we need to do in a manner which is respectful and appropriate. So I want to thank each of my board members for that opportunity. With that, let's see what we can knock off on our agenda. Thanks, Mary. Because we have about four minutes. Let's see, Martha, do you have anything you want for a planist report that you want to go over real quick?
No, I mean, I think we could probably take the submission that's here, that Steve and Vince can leave. It's just a submission of a site plan review application, so it's pretty brief.
All right, well, let's do that. So, we have a submission by Stephen Sawyer for Design Consultants, Inc., for a submission of a site plan review application for new three-season, 164-seat restaurant, including outdoor dining and 54 parking spaces at Two Old Point Road and 8R Old Point Road map, U02 lots 153 and 154. Advocate owner is Plum Island Properties LLC, Vincent's Godin manager. Who would like to speak first, Vincent or Steve?
I guess I see Vincent's muted, so I'll speak. So on behalf, here on behalf of Vincent Godin, and we're excited to submit this. It's the redevelopment of the Angie's Garage. The project will be knocking down the existing service station in the single-family unit that's right behind it, and renovating the rear garage into an interior portion of the restaurant. There'll be a mobile kitchen brought on site, movable kitchen brought on site. And I think it'll be an exciting and lively restaurant, in addition to Plum Island, at the, you know, at the entry there, at the corner. I'm very excited to present this project and work with Vincent to get it rolling. We are hoping to really fast-track it. I know we have to go through the proper review, but we pushed hard to get this submitted today and hoping, you know, we're really hoping that we can at least get on the next available meeting. I think it would be the first meeting in February, is what we hope to get.
All right, great, Stephen. Now that's going to be right across from the Plum Island Grill?
The other? Correct.
Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Martha, do you have anything that you want to share with us?
Well, just give a little background. This project has gone before the zoning board of appeals. My understanding is that they have, they've granted a special permit for the use. The decision is still in process, as far as I know, so it hasn't actually been filed yet with the town. There will also need to be a filing with the Conservation Commission. Typically, we do a pre-application conference, which is basically for the applicant's benefit that has not been done at this point, but those issues will obviously all need to be addressed during the process. So if the board feels so inclined, I would recommend a vote to accept the application and then to set the public hearing date. And the public hearing, now that we can no longer stay deadlines, the public hearing needs to be opened within 35 days of submission, so that does take us to February 3rd.
Great. That being the case, I would welcome an opportunity for a vote from the board, a motion to accept this application.
I'll move to accept the application to set the public hearing date for February 3rd at 7:15 p.m.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'm just going to do a quick roll call. George, how say you, sir?
Yes.
Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Woody?
Woody? Yeah.
Leslie?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel about it?
Yes.
All right, and the chairs in favor as well. Do you need anything else for us, Martha, for this evening?
No, I think that's it. So the 3rd at 7:15. So I'll add that to our calendar.
Perfect.
Great. I'll work with you on the public hearing notice.
Great. Okay, Steve, Vincent, thanks very much.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Super. All right, let's pop up our agenda here. Okay, it is 7:15, perfect timing. And so we have two public hearings tonight. We have a continuation of a concurrent public hearing for Ale Prime Gas Station Convenience Store with Coffee Shop, a tenant with drive-through window operation, 20th Central Street map, R20 lot 28, applicant Ale Prime Energy, care of Anthony Guba, PE owner, is real estate, RE, RNE Real Estate Trust, Ronald and Enda Pearson trustees. This is continued from the 2nd of December 2020, and this is a site plan review application. It is also a special permit application for a gas station and a drive-through operation. I'm going to make note that Larry Murphy will be recusing himself from the proceedings, and that Mary Stone will be participating in the special permit hearing. Mary did miss the 11:42 session of the public hearing, and is submitted appropriate certificate stating that she had watched the video of that session. There were some new materials Martha will do repeat on December 2nd and 28th, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there anything that you want to discuss about those, or should I just move over to Gary, who's at Trafficants?
Um, I think at this point, we could move over to Gary to talk about traffic, and then I see that Tony Guba is here, so if there's anything he wants to present in terms of the revisions that have been made in response to comments, he could go over those, and then we can continue.
Beautiful, beautiful. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask Traffic Officer Gary Hubert to report on your findings regarding the traffic on breakdown, and that we received information from the applicant, and do we need to do any screen sharing here? Or Gary, are you set just to do a present, to make some comments?
I'm all set just to make some comments. No need for screen sharing.
Okay, and before you start here, I just want to make sure, Planning Board members, there was an email with a number of attachments that went out at 4:47 today, just as part of your information packet. If you do need to make reference to any of those materials, that might help with the discussion as Gary makes his presentation. Gary, all to you, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. For the record, again, my name is Gary Hubert, and it's Dan Tech Consulting. I wanted to mention that, as an overview for what we've done with this peer review, we started way back last summer and submitted a preliminary letter back in August 27th, followed that up with a hearing on September 2nd, and after that, we prepared a follow-up letter, and it was dated October 6th, and lastly, one submitted on December 3rd, 2020, to address some issues that arose during the prior meeting. So, I'm not just talking in generalities here. I think from a overall traffic perspective, the applicant was very responsive to the comments that I made on my initial peer review letters. They recommended some changes that I had suggested were really needed in order for this to work acceptably for the traffic operations, including the one-way operation and narrowing the driveways a bit, and providing some space for motorists to bypass on the right or left-turning vehicles. Overall, the analysis of the morning and evening peak hours operations at this site indicate that it will work acceptably as the applicant had shown with the left turns and the volumes projected, and the vines projected, including adjustments made for pre-pandemic conditions to increase the traffic flow, and included the operations of Central Court, Fruit Street, and the general traffic in the area. From an overall perspective, I think it's important to look at some of the things that maybe don't get a lot of attention in traffic impact studies, but are important. One is, I think the question the board had raised is, what is the estimate of the Dunkin' Donuts component versus the the component for the gas station, 12 fueling stations? And the applicant submitted information on that, and I would tend to agree that I would expect that the Dunkin' Donuts on a daily basis would contribute roughly a quarter of the trips generated for the site. And that's of the 2,766 estimate that they generate on a daily basis, that Dunkin' Donuts will contribute about a quarter of that, and the rest of it will be related to either the gas fueling stations or shared gas fueling station and Dunkin' trips. So that's what we expect on a daily basis. During the peak hour, it's a little bit different. During the morning peak hour, we expect from, I believe, roughly 60% of the traffic going to the building will be related to the Dunkin' operation, and during the afternoon, 40%. So that's more or less how it works in the peak period. So those estimates are reasonable. As far as the morning peak hour differences on the street, even though the operations are acceptable, there will be noticeable difference from traffic in the area. Not surprisingly, existing volumes, rough pandemic-adjusted, are estimated 805 vehicles per hour versus 1129, which will be occurring on Central Street from the I-95 ramps to Fruit Street with the development, and that's about a 324 per hour increase on that section. And that's a 37% increase over the existing traffic during the morning peak hour. On Central Street, between Central Court driveway and Fruit Street, the increase is somewhat less. It's 168 trips per hour in the morning peak hour. And once you get beyond Central Court, it's much fewer than that, only 13 trips total. So that's a very small number once you get to the north, to the east of Central Court. In the afternoon, it's a little bit, it's not quite as much changed from between Fruit Streets, like 260 or so, and Central Street at Central Court, East driveway, 130 and 12 to the north. So we're talking significant increases from the standpoint of perception, but from the standpoint of peak hour operations, they will be accepted. And that's what we have to go by when we're evaluating intersections in the area. Now, clearly, the change will be noticeable, but again, it's something that we would have to say from a traffic operations perspective is acceptable. So, that's, I'd like to answer any questions the board may have in a general nature about what was presented, what we did, or why, or what, any clarifications you would like on the information I presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Let me just go down through the board members to see if they have any specific questions for you. I'm going to start first. Larry, would you like to have any, oh, I'm sorry, Larry. George, would you like to have any questions directed to Gary?
Yeah, I do, Gary. Just the other day, some anecdotal information. I was driving back from Town Hall, coming across the bridge of a 95, and there were two cars coming very quickly up the ramp off of 95 from exit 55. There's a yield sign there. The first car, I didn't even look at it, just went zipping through. The second car was a little further back with a little suggestion for my horn, and I blew it a bit. He finally slowed down and pulled over to the side of the road so I could go through. And then he picked up after I left, with the car in front of them, and both went zipping into the road right next to where the gas station is going to be. So, Fruit Street. And I think this is unusual in event, not at all. I think it's very usual, and people had to be very careful crossing the bridge. And if there's any sense of traffic at all at the new station, people can come around that corner and not even notice it until it's too late. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Well, I mean, it's important to that traffic yields properly when entering onto Central Street. I got to admit that, of course, when I was out there, it was not necessarily a peak of a peak hour. I did go during the morning peak period, but it was during the pandemic, so I didn't see traffic at its peak. But again, as I was out there, and I videotaped a little bit of the traffic that was out there, and I didn't see any serious problems. The crash history doesn't seem to indicate there's a lot of serious problems at that particular location from a graphic crash perspective. And I think it's important that we look at the data and how this would change it. This would increase the number of potential conflicts at that point. So you would expect there may be some relatively increased in traffic crashes that might occur in the future with this growth. But again, even with that, I don't expect it will exceed beyond normal expected rates for similar intersections throughout the state.
But I... It might be worthwhile checking with the state police just to see what activity they have there, because I've noticed more than once, they have crews that's parked up there, and they don't stay up there just to idle to see what's going on. I've seen them moving along on the highway, going after people. I spend a lot of time over that bridge. And it's not just every other day or every third day. It's a couple of times a day at least. And that causes a real amount of concern for me. The other thing I noticed on the latest plan were the central line near the station, the double line in the middle of the station, near the sign where it says "Road Narrows." Has that line been moved over by a few feet? Because it seems to me the line is now showing 10 feet on one side, and maybe a little bit more on the other side. Maybe that was done earlier, I don't know.
I'm not aware of that. I mean, it was when I was out there, was in August, actually. That it seemed, I probably was planning on going out there later on this month, but I haven't seen any changes in there since that time.
Okay, well, I would guess I would ask area, Anthony, if there's any been changes at all just near that intersection, near the station. Because, Anthony, you mentioned to me the last meeting, the company would be widening the road at that intersection. And you said there was 150 or 165 feet of frontage. And I'm just wondering how much of an effect that would have distance-wise, considering the amount of traffic that comes through and comes through, and not necessarily at speed limit.
So, George, what am I, what am I suggesting we do is, let's direct all our questions first through Gary, and then I like to open it up to the applicants, because I want to use our consultant first, if that's okay with you.
It is, certainly.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for Gary, George?
I don't.
Okay, beautiful. Woody, do you have any questions for Gary?
I have a clarification question. I messed what you were saying. Did you say there was a overall daily trip 30%, 37% increase in this, in traffic? This will, that you proposed increase in traffic that this will grow up?
Okay, during the morning peak only, okay, the morning peak hour, which is the busiest time for the Dunkin' Donuts operation. I would expect a 37% increase in traffic between the Central Street ramps and Fruit Street, which is the largest part, and then as you get between Central Street and the Central East driveway, it's a little bit less, it's around 22%. And then once you get between the two driveways and beyond, it's 2%. So that's what I was explaining, for the morning peak hour, and it's different for each peak hour. And on a daily basis, it's about the traffic that exists between, right now, between Central Street and Fruit Street is around 7,700 vehicles per day, and that's predicted to increase to 10,430 vehicles per day with this development, or a 2660 vehicle per day increase. That's 34% increase. Central Street between I-95 ramps and Fruit Street. Between Central Street and the site driveways, it's expected to increase by about 1380 vehicles per day to from 7250 to 8,630 vehicles per day. That's a 19% increase. In between Central Street, after you get to site driveways, about 111 vehicles per day to the north of the site driv, site driveways, north of Central Court. So that's, that's the increase during the day, on a normal 24-hour basis. 111 vehicles, 1380 and 2660 between the three. And that's summarized in the letter. Do you, I believe you have that letter, Martha?
Yes. Yeah.
That's available at some point, okay. Because I know it's hard for people to write the stuff down fast, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Anything else, Woody?
No.
Okay, great. Leslie, do you have any questions for Gary?
The only question I have, if Gary could, you reiterate what the peak hours are for the people that are participating in the meeting tonight, so they understand what they are.
Okay. Morning peak hour is basically, I don't have to check the report. I don't have the report open at this time, but I believe it's in a time period of seven to eight, or thereabouts. And it's roughly going to be, without the project, it would be 805 vehicles per hour. With the project, it would be 1129 vehicles per hour. That's total, both directions. And that's a 324 morning peak hour increase. Okay. Do you want the evening peak hour as well? This is, this is between I-95 and Fruit Street. Okay, in same, same location, I-95 and Fruit Street in the afternoon peak hour, it's going from 710 vehicles per hour without it, and 974 vehicles per hour with it. That's a 264 vehicle increase.
Thank you.
All right. Does that answer your question?
Leslie, any other questions for Gary?
No.
Okay. Mary, do you have any questions for Gary?
Gary, just a quick overarching question about 24-hour operation. In the overnight, could you just reiterate what you expect? I mean, we understand that people are more apt to go during the day, but what are you thinking about overnight traffic? In other words, late night?
During the nighttime hours?
Right.
I, I believe that, you know, on a 24-hour basis, the difference is that we would expect that these, the segment between the ramps and Fruit Street to have a 34% increase, and that could roughly apply to the overnight hours as well, as long as it's open, you know. But 34% will be a much smaller number, because the overnight traffic flow is much less during days. If you increase that traffic by 34%, it might be going from, you know, say, 200, 300 vehicles per hour to another, you know, 40 and 50 vehicles per hour beyond that. So, much less than the peak hours, clearly.
And that would be like 2:00 in the morning or something?
Only if they're open 2:00 in the morning, but again, if they're not open beyond 10:00 at night, or whatever the hours are, I don't know if the board has any control over those hours, but I assume they could control that aspect of it.
It's on the table. Okay, so that traffic is coming from 95, right? That, the late-night traffic is coming from 95, not from?
Primarily.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
And Mary?
I'm set.
Okay, cool. I got a, I have a couple of questions for you, Gary. Did you have the data regarding the difference between, between a gas station with a store and a gas station with a coffee shop? Did you get that data difference?
That data was really a combination of looking at the information provided by the applicant and the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that's... And that just is based on, you know, the material that that's available that's out there to review for those types of of land uses. It's it is hard to differentiate them because of the fact that that they are combined with trip making. So when they do these. These estimates of trips, it's it's hard to do that. And I understand why the applicant had difficulty trying to provide that information. But, you know, roughly, as I said, I believe that roughly twenty five percent of the daily trips related to the. Dunkin' Donuts, seventy five percent to the to the fueling aspect of the twelve fueling stations of that. And again, I from a big picture perspective. The trips are the ones that count. So although, you know, again, you're I'd be concerned about the. Percentage of the truck trips and things like that related to the to the trips, but that's the big picture. It's the total trips. That really count because other ones that they all go to the site. So from that perspective, it is. What the estimate is suggesting. And I think those estimates are fairly conservative on the high side because. When I'm looking at the data that was supplied by the applicant's engineer, it seems like they were trying to, you know. Put things higher rather than lower in the estimates.
Okay, so the the numbers that I'm looking at is. For weekly daily, if it was just a gas station would be. Two thousand and sixty.
Two thousand seven hundred and sixty six according to their estimates. Yeah.
So that would be with with a with a donut shop. But if it was just a gas station, it would be about two thousand.
Right.
Right, so a little a little bit of a difference of about seven hundred with a. With a donut shop rather than a store. And then that reflects in the peak hours of about two hundred and six for the morning. And about a hundred and eight in the evening. And I'm going somewhere with this. So the morning would be an additional two hundred and six. Encounters in the peak hours. Okay. Martha, I have a question for you while I have Gary here because I want to make sure that I'm getting things correct. The width of the street where the turning would be for the gas station, is that the where the road starts to narrow down?
Yes.
Okay, so just make sure that I I understand the width of the lanes as this narrows down.
Okay, I'm gonna have to refer back to my one of my sketches that I that I sent back. And I think the applicant hasn't on their plans anyway, but but, you know. I believe for the option that was. requested, they were going to go with a. At the peak with. With widening around their their area in front of the site is going from. The edge edge line here. Peak with about four feet to the north beyond where it was. Where it is under existing conditions. So not not that far beyond existing conditions. And it carries only to the to the. Easterly, excuse me, northerly driveway of the site. And then it goes back to normal street with. So the normal street with, once you get to Central Court, you're really back to the existing. Street with that you have right now. And. When these driveways go in, the widening. Is really only related to. A small portion of the area that would otherwise be the central island. So. And that showed up in the sketch. If you looked at my sketch that that was submitted back in. August, you'd see where that widening that occurred. It's a relatively small relative to the. Driveways and the driveways. I tried to narrow those to to provide much green space as possible. So that's that's the change. It goes from forty feet at Fruit Street down to. Thirty one feet.
Actually, if I may, I've got the plan open in front of me. It goes down to thirty two feet.
Twenty two feet.
Right, right to the west of the entrance into the site.
Right.
We've got two lanes, the east. Eastbound lane is. Thirteen feet. Wide with a four foot shoulder. The westbound travel lane at that point is eleven wide. With a four foot shoulder.
Yeah, that's cool.
Well, as Gary said, it narrows down again. Once you get to the the east of that.
Leslie, I just want to let you know I muted you because of the dog barking. So Martha, so it it the. Eastbound lane then is eleven foot eleven foot wide with a four foot shoulder.
Now, the eastbound line is thirteen feet wide.
Okay.
With a four foot shoulder. The westbound is eleven feet with a four foot shoulder.
Okay, great. So Gary, I'm gonna go back to you now for a second. So. I want to go back and I want to create a scenario here. We have peak traffic in the morning with that additional two hundred and four. Cars because of the donut shop going specifically for donuts because I'm differentiating between just a gas station and a. A station that has a donut shop. So can people go for coffee because they want the donuts on the source of. So we have that scenario and we have this width of this roadway. So what's we're encouraging to happen, if I understand this right, is we're going to be encouraging traffic to pass on the right. Of a left turning lane. Is that correct?
That's correct to try to block him further back into Fruit Street.
Okay, so during peak hour in the morning, we have all of the buses. Going to Triton. Coming down that road and what's the typical length of a bus, fifty foot or something?
Around forty five to fifty feet, correct.
So we're we're now going to be asking. A number of buses. All arriving at the same time that a forty five fifty feet length. To negotiate around a left travel lane at the narrowest part of the road. Tell me about the traffic issues that's going to create as people are trying to come out of the residential area. There that currently exists. The impact that that's going to have with this significantly increased volume during this very narrow period of time. Has all these school buses are running down the road that I want. I'm trying to get to traffic safety here and issues of. What's going to happen during those peak hours, especially with school buses, you know, if there weren't school buses involved and we didn't have all this stuff, we didn't have bus stops. I think it might be a little bit of a different concern. So I need you to kind of. Look at this a little bit differently from that perspective.
Well, again, I I guess that when I when I'm looking at this, remember that that. I didn't do the traffic study. I reviewed it. That's my first saying.
Okay, okay.
Secondly, when I asked the applicant to look at those volumes, I wanted to make sure that they included all the vehicle. Tights that were included in and I believe in their analysis, they did. And when I looked at their analysis, did include the. The amount of trucks or buses that were in the operations in their analysis and their operation analysis in. Acceptably during the morning peak hour.
So then the number of buses would be known. For that location at that time, I can ask the applicant that question that he can give me that answer.
Yes, you should ask the applicant that question.
Okay, Martha, make sure that I ask that question. I don't want to forget that. That's important for me. Number of buses in the AM and then number of buses.
And trucks were also included.
Oh, that's right, because we have, right, the construction right then and there. Okay. Because it's the length I'm worried about or the length is what's, you know, raising my concern.
I worried about that when I did the analysis.
Okay, and I understand that you you were reviewing somebody else's data. I appreciate that. And so. Now, this is a question. We're going to be encouraging traffic to pass on the right. And there's an existing roadway there. Are we creating? By by saying, yes, we accept this particular model. Are we are we potentially creating a scenario? We're going to create more traffic conflicts?
Technically, you are. What you're doing is you're allowing for traffic to bypass to the right if necessary. If it's if you don't want to allow that to happen, you're just increasing the queuing back to the outside and potentially making it. More likely that you may have a situation where you have a rear end collision, which is also concerning from a from a safety perspective. But anytime you introduce left turning traffic, I can tell you that it's never a. An improvement over an existing situation where you don't have a left turn. That's for sure. Whether it's a safety problem per se, is it going to be difficult, more difficult for the people to get out than it is today? It will be more difficult to get out today, but it's not going to be in an operation that is considered to be. Unacceptable in normal traffic engineering analysis.
I I understand. I understand the standard. I'm just trying to. To to appreciate the change and the impact it's going to have on those residents that are coming out of that area. Right, and it is from what you're telling me is going to have have an impact. Okay. Let's see, one, two, three, four. Those are my. Questions that I had of you. And I just want to make sure. Board members, are there any other questions? Do you want to do a quick survey? George, any other questions?
Yes, I have another question for, let's see, for Gary. To the east of the proposed site, slightly up the hill. It's a pretty large, I guess, brown house, very large, actually, that extends out well toward the road. I came by there the other day and. Looking at the site where the site would be, you really have to look around this house to see where it is. I'm sure there'd be lights during the not even during the day perhaps. But if it's busy, people might come along by that house and not see the traffic. So I don't know whether you've looked at that or not.
This is north of the site?
No, it's east of the site on the north side of the road.
Where the where the volume from this site is going to be the least in terms of change. So it's only be, you know, a very low percentage of site generated traffic that will occur in that portion of the site. So I don't expect. Many changes in operations for whatever is going to happen. To the east of the site because of because of that. Most of the traffic is going to be either entering. If it's site related traffic, it's either going to be entering primarily the left turn coming in and then exiting. Mostly to the right turns going out from from the Westerly driveway. But going in that opposite direction, there will be a few new new cars added to to the. Traffic that's out there today. There will be some.
What I was thinking of was my if I'm passing the fire station on my left. Yes, there's a rise in the road and then it begins to come down the hill just about this house. And it's a sudden change of elevation. And unless you're paying attention, you might see. The gas station or the traffic a little late. Just an observation.
Oh, I see. You mean visibility of the gas station is.
Yes.
Your perspective. Okay, well, that's again, that's why we looked at sight lines. And I did look at that. I went all the way up to the top of the hill you're talking about and tried to see what would happen. At that site driveway when traffic was entering in there. And.
Yes.
There is enough sight line to be able to deal with the entering traffic that's coming. They can see the traffic entering. But I didn't want traffic exiting from that site. And I said, that would be a sight line issue because it was it was. Very close to the edge edge of the road where you've got trees and whatnot inside to prevent visibility. So. They did do a good thing by moving the. Entrance and the exit so that it was further away from that corner. And that's a that's a benefit.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, George. I'm gonna go down the line again. Leslie, do you have any additional questions for Gary? Hold on, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself, Leslie. Leslie? You'll have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Um, okay, so now I'm in a different thing. I have two questions. So I think. What George is referring to is noise tree service. That if you're looking at where. The station is going to go would be to the right of the station. And that is a business owned property. For tree removal and tree service. So he's got trucks entering. And exiting off of that property, you know, large trucks. And the other question I have is. When you refer to it as a coffee shop, is it a sit down style coffee shop or is it a? Takeout interior window and drive through window?
I believe for the plans, it shows there's a few tables inside and I don't know if there's an inside. Maybe Anthony can answer that question whether or not there's supposed to be an inside. Service desk. I thought it was primarily going to be the drive through, but there might be something inside access as well. There's not much seating inside.
There there are some tables inside. I think it's both.
Both in there. And they're both included in the analysis, by the way, just so whatever whatever was is assumed for that operation was done in the traffic.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask that is I've had a couple of people approach me and. Ask me if there's an actual restaurant going in to the facility. That you've changed your mind and it's not just a coffee shop. So I just have a clarification on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other questions for Gary? Are you good?
I'm good.
Good, great. Woody, do you have any supplemental questions for Gary?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mary, do you have any supplemental questions for Gary?
Do not.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, Gary, thank you very much. We appreciate all of your energies with this project, understanding that you reviewed somebody else's. Traffic study and sometimes the concerns with that. If you want to stick, that's great. If you need to, if you have another obligation, I understand that as well because. What we're going to do now is I'm going to go to the applicant to see if he has any new materials to supply to us. Then I ask the board to have questions. Then we're going to go for public comment. So I just.
No problem waiting.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much, Gary. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'm going to now ask the the applicant representative, Tony Guba. To present any new materials or revisions of drawings that he has for us. So anything new for us, Tony, and hello, happy new year.
Happy new year. Thank you. Happy new to everybody. As far as new material, we made some minor changes to the plan in order to. Address. Peer review comments. And when I say minor, I think that. The everything has been previously presented, other than the addition of a catch basin at the. Front of the store to catch some of the water coming down the east side of the store so it doesn't run across the front. I can put that plan up if you want. We've had problems with screen sharing before, but if you'd like, I can put that up now.
Martha, do you want to try the magic screen sharing?
You want. I've already made Tony a co-host if he wants to give it a try.
All righty, great.
My screen kind of went blank, so I'm not sure if you can see it.
We can see it.
Okay, so this is the. The new layout of the. Station. With the with the most current updates to it. As I mentioned. The layout's pretty much what you had seen before. We have the store here, the fueling island here, the driveways. Fuel pump, the tanks were moved from this area. On on the west side over to the east side. But I think you've already seen that. I think the only significant change that you would notice. As a patron of the site or doing a site walk is in this area here. The addition of a catch basin. All the water which was previously draining kind of through the middle of the building. Rear towards the rear and towards the front, now all drains towards the front. So the concern was that the the catchment area on this side of the building from the trash enclosure. To the back of the building and this side of the the building. Would then run across the front of the building to get to this catch basin here. We we put in an additional catch basin with a with a grid chamber. This side of the store so that it now. Intercepts that water before it runs across and that reduces. The amount of sheet flow across the front of the store where most people are going to be walking and patrons are going to be. Other than that, I don't think there's any major changes on the plan for me to. To present to you that hasn't that we haven't already shown.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Tony. We can probably stop the screen sharing.
What I'd like to do, though. Well, see, this is where we ran into the problem. If I. I think you had to take me off as co-host before in order to be able to.
Okay, Martha can do that.
I can do that.
There it goes. I got a little pop up that came up on my other screen. Did that work?
Yep, we're good.
Yep.
We're good. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to answer a couple of questions if we have this moment now while it's still fresh in everyone's mind. There was a question about. The. Buses and the AM peak hour. That question came up previously from the police chief. And I think Martha might recall that. We did answer that. The school start and stop times do not coincide with the AM PM peak hours. So where the buses would have to be. Traveling prior to the school start, that would be well prior to the AMP.
Tony?
Yes.
I have to ask you a question. If you, if you put a donut shop there and there are high school stu- students driving to school, they are going to be stopping and creating their own peak hour, which might be a new number. And there will be school bus, school buses going at that time. So I just think you need to keep that in consideration. Because, because it didn't exist before. The minute you throw a donut shop near juniors or seniors with a set of keys and a set of wheels, I can assure you, they are there. Cause that's what happens with double D on uh, at the rotary, if they're coming that way or coming from, you know, around. So okay, didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to make that clarification there.
Well, hopefully if it's something that's closer to the school, that would make it a more safe situation for those students than to travel elsewhere and then try to rush back to school on time. Um as far as being an actual restaurant, we do, we're showing 12 seats. But I'm not sure what the difference is between a coffee shop and an actual restaurant. That's that's not where we're having uh waiter, waitress service or anything like that. So I'm not sure what the difference of uh classification there is in restaurant. We do show 12 seats. We've accounted for that in our parking requirements. And um, it's typical Dunkin' operation for this kind of a small satellite uh station. So there are some seats there, but most of the patrons just drive through and uh, and consume the product off premises. Um I'm familiar with the ramps at that location and I know someone asked about the state police uh being on the ramps all the time. And, and I know that from my experience, those ramps offer a good location for a trap. And um, and so I was always worried, cause I've lived in Exeter, traveled to Danvers daily. So I, I know that those few exits there and down in Topsfield were locations where the state police were, were often uh uh located, not because of problems at the end of the ramps, but because of trying to do uh traffic enforcement on the highway itself. Um I guess that, that's the main uh things that I noticed in the questions that already came up as far as trying to answer some of those questions.
Great, great. Thanks so much, Tony. Um, I just wanna run down um and see if any of the board members have specific questions uh that they'd like to ask to Tony about the new materials presented or any other questions. So I'm gonna start first with George. Do you have any questions uh for Tony?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Leslie, do you have any questions uh for Tony?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Woody, do you have any questions for Tony?
Yes, I do. Um, I was looking at the latest set of plans that we got from you through my in the uh easement that, for work, that was, that you guys had proposed in, I think, the last meeting. I see here, it says a new retaining wall, less than two feet high in the back corner there. Is that, is that new or was that on the plan before?
We always had a retaining wall in that area. Um I think the retaining wall previously was more just along the uh west property line and didn't wrap the corner. This one wraps the corner. It's a little move back from the west property line a little bit and move back. That wall was, and I don't um I don't believe that um, I mean, it's a small wall, just a couple of blocks high. Because we had to raise the back of the property in order to change the, the flow towards the front. The elevation got raised like a foot and a half in the back. In order to do that, we had, I had to shift that wall to make the grading work.
In that, that wall's in the easement or that wall is on the proposed lot?
It's, it's all, it's all in, well, it crosses over, so it's in both, but it's primarily in the easement area.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, Mary, where'd you go? Oh, there you are. It's, it's Hollywood Squares. If somebody comes into the meeting, it sometimes shifts people. And Mary was over here, now she's up over here. So, Mary, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, great. Um, thank you very much. Uh, Tony, I do wanna follow up. Um, I don't remember what the numbers were for buses that travel to Triton High School in the morning. What's that number look like?
Um, I tried looking quick when, when uh, you had the earlier discussion and I didn't see it. So it's something I can't tell you at the, off the top of my head.
Okay, so we don't know the, the buses in the morning or, or in the afternoon. Uh, how about the, the number of trucks that come out of Pearson Plaza? And I didn't even think about the trucks that come out of noise. Uh, do we have an idea of what those numbers look like?
I don't know if they were uh specific to where they were coming from uh and whether they were counted. I just don't remember that.
Okay.
But again, I'd have to answer, I'd have to go back and take a closer look at it. It's not something I can do in the next minute, so.
I got you, cause there's a construction company behind the site and then there's a tree removal service uh to the east of the site. So there's two areas where the trucks are coming in and out. Okay, so I guess we need to, um, that, that's important information. Um
I have to say that while I've been on the site, I've never seen a truck go in or out of noise. I, I mean, they must have trucks go in and out, but I don't know how often it, it occurs.
Okay, okay. It might be morning when they start and later in the Yeah, okay. Uh, very good. I don't think I have any additional questions at this time. And I just wanna see if Martha, do we have anything that we need to uh bring in for supplemental information or, or do you have any concerns? Cause I haven't asked you if you had any concerns or points of clarification that you need.
Um No, I was gonna ask a clarification about the retaining wall. Woody already covered that. We've talked about traffic. Um, now there are some other considerations, but I think we may get into, into that sort of in talking about the project in general. So, nothing right now.
Okay, great. Do you have any uh new uh names or letters or emails that you've received since uh, or 11/4/2020, a public hearing?
Um, actually, that's one pair I forgot to get set up to call up. We did get a letter from Chris Murphy and email today with some attachments which I forwarded to everybody. So hopefully you got that. Um, and I can try to pull up the list if you'd like me to, of people who have submitted.
Okay.
Seventy-six or something on
Yeah, two hundred and seventy-six. So um let me see if I can, if you can bear with me for a second.
And if you can't, Martha, I can move into public comment and then I can circle back to you?
Uh, that would be fine too.
Okay, great, 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 great. Um, so what I'd like to do at this point in time, just to keep things moving, is I'd like to uh see if there's any public uh comment questions. And, and what we're looking for is we've had a couple of discussions and I and I appreciate so much all the wonderful uh comments that have been made and how they have all been distinct and indifferent and supplying new information. So we're looking for new information or new comments that we haven't heard before. Uh, cause Martha has kept track of all of our previous comments along with Emily. Um, so if there's any new information that you want to supply to the board that we should uh hear about, I'd welcome that. And I'm just gonna ask that you use the raise hand function. Uh, and if you uh can't do that, if you're on a phone, um, I, I would ask that you uh uh use uh star nine uh to do that on a phone. So Martha, I'm gonna let you start off with the coordination of questions.
All right. Uh, the first one I see here is Eric Marimaldi.
Okay, Eric, if you wouldn't mind, name and address, please. Thanks very much.
Sure, I'm just turning on my camera. Hey, everyone. Um, I'm Eric Marimaldi. I'm twenty-eight Central Street. I live far diagonal to the location, um, closest, second closest to the highway. Um, so I just had a couple of things, not much, but I, I did have one question for Gary. Is it okay that I ask him? He's shaking his head. Said yeah, so I assume that's okay.
I'm gonna ask the question, absolutely, Eric.
So, a few years ago, there were multiple accidents coming off the highway in that area and the state, on the state property put a do not pass sign for that whole road. So I just have concerns with that do not pass sign if, that you, you really can't pass like the way it's planning to pass.
So your, your concern is that the state has indicated that there should be not, no passing on that section of road for the state section of road. And how would that influence this, uh, the applicant's uh proposal?
Exactly, cause if you're, if you're taking ninety-five north and you get off fifty-five, it's pretty, you get a, I'll explain it better. So I live at twenty-eight Central. Three feet before my mailbox going towards the highway, that's all state property. But because there were so many accidents with people pulling into the Pearson Plaza that one year, they put a do not pass sign for that whole road. So my question is how are you gonna have enough room when you can't technically pass anyway? And if that is still valid, what type of traffic are you looking at with all, you know, if you can't pass and you have to wait for people to take a left? Is anyone who even lives on that road, regardless if it's by Pearson's or all the way down to Triton, not too many people just let you out of the driveway. It just doesn't happen. So my question is how that will, what do you, what you think is how that'll impact everything?
Um, yeah. Quickly, I
Go ahead, go ahead, Gary. Sure, please.
The only thing I can think of is that uh, from a, from a practical perspective, when you re-strike the road, the way this proposed, it still may be that people feel that they can't pass to the right, even though it's, it's wide. So that you will end up, you know, for the most part, most people probably choose not to circulate around to the right, but it would be physically possible to do so. That's what, uh, that's what the idea is to, to allow it in, slowly to be done, not a high-speed bypass to the right. That's not going to happen. That's that one, that would, is not what's be proposed. And that's not what, how it would happen because it isn't a narrow section of road. But the thought was that when someone is waiting to make a left turn light and they have their left turn signal on and someone is following behind them, slowly can go around to the right because it's wide enough to be able to, to do that. But it's not a high, intended to be a high-speed situation. That's not what it's intended to be. Um, and again, it could be that people choose, well, I'm not gonna, I, I don't see a left turn light and I'm not gonna go around to the right. That's fine too. But that's been evaluated as far as queuing goes anyway.
I mean, the, the concern I have is that they probably won't be able to do it anyway, cause of the sign. It's kinda what I'm getting at. So what I'm basically saying is you could make the road thirty feet wide on the right, but if the state's saying you can't pass, it's irrelevant, right?
Passing on the right and bypassing on the left are two different things.
But it doesn't, the sign just says no pass. Doesn't say no passing left, doesn't say no passing right. You get what I'm saying?
He is going on the left side of a car and overtaking them while they're continuing to, to travel. Passing, bypassing on the right when someone's trying to make a left turn is not considered passing.
Okay, okay. Uh, Eric, I think I, 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 I got your point and I think um it's understood.
Okay. The other question I had with the, with the buses um, is that it's not just Triton buses. The Pearson Plaza is where, where do your kid, where do your kids get dropped off and picked up? And some other schools. And those are not regular Triton hours, right? Which I could see Peter shaking his head. It's not, you know, the same hours as Triton, so I, I, my office is in that window. I look out that window all day. I see everything. You know, I said, I've seen accidents, people pulled over. You know, so I know that, and I don't know the time off the top of my head, but they're, I think they get picked up between seven-thirty, eight o'clock in that plaza. And there's parents that come there, sitting there with minivan to drop off. So I just wanna make sure those people are also taken into consideration with the with the busing issue. And then the other thing is, cause we were talking about the noise trucks with the tree service. I, you guys probably haven't seen it, but in fall and spring with all the tree work, all the tree companies, Asplund, Iron Tree, Noise, I can name them all, cause I see them driving by my window, drive and pull all their trucks in there, cause they sell their logs to Pearson's. And that backs up. If people don't slow down when they're coming down the hill, when they're taking a left, that gets backed up to the ramp. Cause the trucks are so big and you can't go around them. Regardless of the sign or not, you really can't go around them. They're massive. So, you know, that's the other thing I wanted to bring up to be taken into consideration. Cause I've, I've, I have seen some nasty accidents out there just from my window.
Thank, thanks, Eric. You just brought something to my mind. The largest stump grinder in this area is located at that facility.
Yeah, I mean, this truck's there all the time.
I remember that from another planning board site walk that we were on recently. So, okay, Eric, is that all you have?
That's all I have, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
No problem. Thank you.
Who do we have next, Martha?
Uh, next is Kathy Sperling.
Uh, good evening. Hi, how are you? Happy New Year to everyone. Glad to be back uh discussing this again. Um, I have a couple of comments on some of the stuff that was brought up tonight, which I think we've reiterated a number of times. So I'm, I'll get right to the point. I wanna, what?
Address.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten Parker River Drive. Off, which is off of Central Court, which is the access road to come out onto Central Street, across the street from this project. Um, I'd like to know who's paying for the reconstruction of the road. That's number one. Whether the town is paying for it or the applicant is paying for it, they will also try to, they will also possibly have to take down the huge tree which is um, on the McBurney property. Um
Uh, Kathy, Kathy, you got muted. Uh, and I might have done that when I let somebody into the meeting.
There you go. Mute me or, you're muting me already, Peter, and I'm on a roll.
The arrow went up and I might have glanced over your name. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I've been prepped since December second. Um, anyway, we continue to be concerned about visitors coming into the area to use the station and not being a part of the community. Um, I believe in the, in the uh applicant's um materials, early on, they did a frequency of trips to a Dunkin' Donuts in different areas of the state. And I believe the last Dunkin' Donuts um that they looked at was a trip from two thousand and sixteen in a different area, which I think is a little outdated for the number of trips. Um, in just, in today's discussion regarding the, the turning and right-sided passing, even if the, the um road is widened, there is no way, even if that road is widened, that we, Parker River Drive and Central Court will be able to get out of our street. You have, right now, you have to look to the right and you have to look to the left. And since this project, I've started looking across the street to figure out how the heck am I gonna get out peak hours when we all were working in Boston or wherever people were. Um, and this is about our, our neighborhood and, and our concerns about that. Um, but something new, which I believe um Martha has, is my December second letter. I didn't date it, but it was for the previous meeting. Um, during which I brought up that, the previous meeting on November second, it was brought to our attention that there was another project on Downfall Road called the Seacoast K nine uh project in which um, the planning board um, I think, did not approve that project based on section ninety-seven, three C of the zoning bylaws. In that particular section of the bylaws, there's five things that were considered. And I will go over each of the five things and how they apply to this particular project. Even though this is a commercial property, the, the properties across the street are agricultural and residential and this will be impacted. So the number one thing on that section is, is this in the best interest of the town? And I think based on the two hundred and seventy-six signatures that you have on a position, the seventy-two people that came to the original uh planning board meeting back in September or August and the numerous emails that the community has shown that they do not believe that this is in the best interest of the plow, of the town. The second thing in that section is, is, is the project not injurious or obnoxious to the neighboring properties? This, according to our interpretation, is obnoxious to neighboring properties. We have four property owners who are opposed to the project, as well as numerous um neighbors on Central Court and Parker River Drive. All of which, at one point or another, another during these planning board meetings, has spoken out in opposition to the project. Number three is, will this satisfy a need or convenience not otherwise served? I think we've gone over that regarding the other gas stations and convenience stores. Number four, this project should not affect abutting and nearby properties by increasing traffic and on-street parking. As we've discussed today, the, the um traffic is gonna increase. And Gary, I think, said, um, although the traffic op- operations would be acceptable, there is a significant increase and noticeable, noticeable change and perception to the traffic that is there is a significant increase and noticeable, noticeable change and perception to the traffic that is going to be um, instituted when this project goes in. Let's see, uh, the abutters have, um, voiced their concerns about the traffic. Gary Morse brought up to, tonight, the, uh, the yield sign coming off of ninety-five North. And they do fly off that and onto Central Street. And I, I don't know how you're gonna stop that. And that's, that's a state issue. Um, but I think the big thing tonight is everyone seems to be involved in commenting on the traffic. And there's no two ways around it. This traffic is gonna increase. And the question becomes, is this really something that we want in our town at this point? And I think the neighborhood and people throughout, not only Byfield and the neighboring people, have, have brought to your attention that this is something we don't want. Is this a commercial property? Absolutely. Has it been voiced that some other project would be acceptable? I totally agree. The office building that's next to the Pearson Plaza in May of nineteen ninety-four, Pearson's wanted to put in a gas station, but they withdrew their, um, application because they hadn't done enough research. That office building went in, nobody had any issues regarding that because of the size of it and the tenants and the lack of traffic that it would draw. So I think that the issue here is, this is not a project that we would like to see on this commercial piece of property. Sorry, Anthony. It's just not what we want. Um, and I think really the planning board and everyone should listen to the community um, and the people who live in and around that. If this project was across the way on the other AL Prime where there's more, um, property and more able to turn around, it would, it might be a different story. But this project is too big for this site and it's not wanted by the community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your commenting and helping us with our decision-making process. Um, Martha, who's, who do we have next?
Uh, next I see Melissa Gasper.
Okay, Melissa, name and address, please. Thanks so much.
Hi, it's Melissa and Larry Gasper, and we live at three Johnson Lane. And, um, I would like to, um, echo what Kathy said um, about that there's been a lot of evidence of people not thinking this is a good project for our neighborhood. And I would like to take issue with, um, the traffic study that said it was a acceptable levels of traffic. Who determined acceptable? I don't think thirty-four percent more traffic in the mornings is acceptable. I just think that's a lot more cars. And, you know, this is a residential neighborhood. It does have a mixture of commercial. But, um, I, I just don't think that, you know, the traffic level is worth, you know, how it's going to, um, be detrimental to the, um, neighborhood. And also, I disagree with the whole peak hour or the peak time being like seven to eight. I mean, I live on the other side of the highway and you can clearly hear a lot of traffic that's happening after five o'clock. There is a lot of traffic from five to eight-thirty when I get on the highway to go to work. So I just think that if there was a coffee shop or, you know, that will draw more traffic over there. Like maybe without it, you know, it doesn't show that there's as many cars. But I definitely think that once it's there, there's gonna be such an increase in traffic. And I just hope that the planning board will listen to, um, the two hundred and seventy-six people who have petitioned that this isn't something that they want. And if it couldn't be safe with the road as is, I think that's reason enough to just say, this is not an, um, good use of this property. Like if, to widen that road is gonna impact the people that live on it. And I don't feel uncomfortable about having the road restripped and all that. I mean, why should we try to accommodate something that's gonna be detrimental to our, um, neighborhood? So I'm not for allowing any variances, any special permits or anything. I mean, if that property as is, and the road as is, is not acceptable, then it's just not acceptable. Let's find a new project. Or a new use of that property. Thank you for listening.
Thanks very much. We appreciate you.
Thanks, Melissa.
And participating. Yes, thank you. Um, Martha, who do we have next on our, on our list?
Uh, next I see Kimberly Kneck.
All right, Kimberly, uh, name and address, please, if you wouldn't mind. Oh, she's connecting. We might have a connecting issue.
Um, I don't see audio for her.
Yep. So maybe we'll come back to Kimberly. Uh, who do you have next, Martha?
Uh, next is Karen Barry.
Uh, Karen, uh, name and address, please. Uh, you'll have to unmute yourself, please, Karen. Here you go. Perfect.
Uh, Karen Barry, twelve Parker River Drive. Um, I would just like to, uh, I think Kathy and Melissa both covered, uh, the comments that I would like to, to make. Uh, one being the traffic is a huge issue, but even more than the traffic being an issue is the character of the town and the benefit to the town. I don't see another gas station and a donut shop being a benefit to the town. I see it as a benefit to the owner, um, but not to the character of our town or to the needs of the town. Within five miles, there, there are two Dunkin' Donuts in Newburyport. There's a Dunkin' Donuts in Rowley. We already have a gas station in town. I don't see a benefit to us and I see it more as a detriment to the town. And I think the traffic is a huge issue. Are we gonna have people trying to take a left-hand turn into the donut area? And meanwhile, because the road is so narrow, the traffic's gonna be backed off on the exit off ninety-five. Um, it's a mess in the morning. It's a mess in the afternoon. It's, it's a tough enough street to pull out of now. I can only imagine how tough it will be with something right across the street. Um, I agree with Melissa. I mean, we've had, it, it's pretty clear that people in the town don't want this project. Um, I feel like we keep talking about it and minor, there are minor changes here and there, but it's just, it's still, the project is the project. And thank you for listening and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate you participating and sticking with us through this Zoom stuff. I think Kimberly, uh, Kimberly, you able to join us? And if you could do your name and address, please?
Looks like she's unmuted.
Yep. Kimberly? I, uh, Kimberly, I'm not sure if you can hear us, uh.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can do it in the floor.
Oh, yay. Okay, good.
Name and address.
So it's Kim Kneck and I live at fifty-six Fruit Street.
Great, thanks.
Um, so I'm here tonight because I'm opposed to the proposed project, um, at twenty-three Central Street. And, um, I have a, a few comments, uh, and questions. So I'll, I'll just go through them first. And then if there's any, uh, questions for me, um, about those comments, we can address them then. So I, I moved to Newbury four years ago to raise a family with my husband. Um, so our children could grow up in a safe and quiet rural town. I believe allowing a project such as this is the opposite development the town needs. This use is much more detrimental than the current use in its residential abutters. Um, the area surrounding this property is, as we've discussed, is a heavily utilized commercial operation with overreaching use of the surrounding environment. So this type of addition to the area is only going to make the issues at hand worse. The property at twenty-three Central Street is a pre-existing non-conforming lot with less than required frontage. So why, why should the town allow a high-vehicle intensity use on a lot with less than adequate area to sustain a proposed use? The, the property is one-third the size of the gas station that's located at seventeen Central Street. So the, why would the town allow such a high-impact use to such a small property? Abutting a residential neighborhood. If the town wants a coffee shop drive-through, the commercial property that's at the sixth Fruit Street should be utilized. Not, we shouldn't be demolishing residential structure. Um, in addition, with the recent rusty can restaurant use, the abutting property vehicle trips has grown a thousand percent over the past few years, over historical uses. Um, a development of this high-frequency vehicle use, gas station and coffee shop will, is only gonna increase that, um, you know, as was said earlier, thirty-seven percent. And, you know, another thing I, I also want to reiterate is that this is residential. There is tons of children who live on Fruit Street, um, and the surrounding streets. Um, and the bus and the kids riding their bikes and just, it just doesn't make sense and it's, it seems dangerous. Um, and lastly, the abutting properties at number two and ten Fruit Street are a regulated Massachusetts chapter sixty-one A open space for forest and agricultural use. Um, so this, this proposed gas station, abutting the protected open space, um, is gonna be more detrimental than what it currently exists now. Um, you know, in fact, the property owners that are at number two and ten may not even be in compliance with the regulated open space requirement, uh, uses for that property. So, you know, I'm not here to present a not-in-my-backyard situation, but just more of a common sense request to think this proposal through and the current negative feedback that the board has been receiving from, uh, from the Byfield residents. You know, I do appreciate the town's peer review of this proposed project and the changes made by the applicant to conform to the town's standards. But this use would be much more detrimental than its current use. And, you know, additionally, almost every traffic study is subjective and highly dependent on the method utilized. So we all know that between the current traffic situation from the rusty can users and the commercial, um, to the Pearson trucks and, and the trucks to the tree, uh, company, um, in addition to, uh, you know, adding a twenty-four-hour gas station with a coffee shop. If that gets approved, um, this is gonna create issues far into the future for the town, increasing costs to manage. And of course, you know, is likely gonna be coming through taxpayer wallets. And, uh, thank you for your time. That's, that's all I have.
Great. And thanks very much. We appreciate you participating in this process.
Thank you.
Yeah. Martha, did you see anyone else?
That is all I see for raised blue hands.
Okay, um, so at this time, I just want to turn to the board members to see if there's any new questions uh, that have been circulated up from any of the questions that have been asked by, uh, any of the public. So I'm just gonna run down the, the question chain again. Uh, George, any additional questions or comments?
No.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Leslie, any additional questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. Woody, any additional question? Shoot, any additional questions or comments?
No, not at this time.
Thanks, Woody. Uh, Mary, any additional questions or comments?
To make the observation that it's really great to have people participate in this process and I'm glad we can do it. And so many people are weighing in. Um, it helps us as planning board members to, uh, think it through carefully. Thank you.
Mary, I just love you, girl. You know that? Okay, um, I think what we're going to do is kind of review our site plan, uh, decision criteria. So, uh, Martha, could you, um, help do some screen sharing so I can kind of read through this stuff with my tired little old eyes?
I can.
Can you take me off as host, co-host so that I could raise my hand when I can, when I'm?
Oh, I am sorry, Tony. Let me, let me do that so we can make you un-co-host you. I think Martha has to do that.
I will do that right now.
Okay, um, uh, Tony, did you want to say something, Sarah?
I'd like to if I had, if you, if I can.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'd like to just address a couple of minor things. One is, I know that there's a perception that the accident rate is really high and there's nasty accidents. But the traffic study and the accident reports that were done through the police do not confirm that. Um, there, if, this is a lower-than-average accident area. Um, as far as who's paying for the project, if there's any improvements that need to be made in the road, the striping, the widening, the curbs, the sidewalk that's been proposed, all of that would be borne by AL Prime when the site is being developed. So there would not be any extra cost to the town for any of the improvements. It was stated that all the abutters are in opposition, but there are at least three letters on file of the most direct abutters that are in support of this petition. As far as this not being the correct use of the property, the property is zoned business highway, specifically one of the few zones in the town of Newbury that specifically allow the use of the gas station. It does not allow the use of, that residential use that's there now is non-conforming. The daycare use that someone suggested a few meetings ago would be non-conforming. The gas station on the other side of the highway is non-conforming because it's not in the same commercial zone. So for those reasons, this property from a zoning standpoint, which is the town ordinance, this property is more suitable for this use and was intended to be used this way more than any of those other uses or the gas station existing on the other side of the highway, which, um, I understand may not, may seem contrary to the way it looks now. But in actuality, it seems that whoever put the zoning ordinance together and voted on it way back when, the intent was to define this area for this kind of commercial use, particularly because it's near the highway and it makes sense to have this kind of use near the highway. I guess that's basically it. I, I understand that, um, there's a lot of opposition to this. It's really hard to get someone in a neighborhood or in a town in general to write letters or sign petitions for this kind of use in support of it. But, and so I, I can understand that there's an overwhelming number of people who have signed against it. It's a lot easier to have someone sign a petition and say, yeah, we don't really need that. But at the same time that it's being argued that the use is not needed, it's being argued that it's gonna generate a lot of traffic. And those seem to me to be conflicting points of view. If you're gonna have a use that generates a lot of traffic, then obviously it's a use that's needed or wanted by the people who are passing by in that neighborhood or, uh, serving the community in general on the highway. So let me just finish by saying, I think that we're proposing, um, we're open to suggestions. We can modify this proposal some. We could not modify it by turning the station one hundred and eighty degrees around and putting the pumps in the back because that would not work with the layout of the property. But, and we also can't add another driveway in the back. And that's because of having to cross several pieces of other property as well as the grade issue that would happen in the back. So, um, we're open to comments regarding our proposal as we've made it. And we can modify it, uh, more if needed. And, um, that's basically it.
Thanks, Tony, very much.
Thanks, Tony.
Yep, appreciate it. Um.
Can I?
Yes.
Uh, can I just make one clarification? Um, the existing AL Prime, uh, location actually is on a property that's zoned. It's also zoned commercial highway. The difference between that property is the front part of it is commercial highway. The back part is actually residential agricultural. So the whole lot is not all commercial highway, but.
Yeah, the front of that is zone C-A. It's not the same.
Uh, no, it's across the street. It's commercial highway A. Where our building is right now is commercial highway A. That is, is straight commercial highway. So just, just a clarification.
Okay, you, you're correcting me. Um, I may be wrong, but, um, that was my, I'd looked at that zoning map pretty close, so I must have, I must have, uh.
The commercial highway is on the south side of Central Street. Commercial highway is on the north side.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, Martha. Um, Martha, I see one more hand up. Uh, Bob, uh, Galino?
Yeah, Galino.
Galino, okay. Uh, Bob, did you want to make a comment before we kind of, uh, wrap up our, our discussion here? And if you do, please name and address. Bob, you need to unmute yourself if you'd like to talk with us. Or did you not raise your hand, Bob?
Yeah, I got it.
Beautiful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's Bob Galeno at nine School Street.
Thank you. It's Bob Galeno at nine School Street, and and I brought up this issue last, the last meeting, and I and I know Mr. Guper heard it because he apparently has made some amendments to the original plan to add a third lane on Central Street. Is that, is that correct? Is that what I've been hearing? Because I don't have the benefit of one of those maps, that map that he's he's screen shared with us earlier. It looks like at the bottom of that map might have shown the street. If I could have a look at that, I because I I can't imagine putting a three lane section in front of that area. I I don't know how you're doing that.
Okay.
I I heard eleven feet on the left lane and I think thirteen or fourteen feet on the right lane.
Right. So let me ask Martha Taylor if she can pop up the uh the illustration just so we can take a look at the roadway depiction. Martha, can you do that? Do you have that?
I don't have that queued up. I don't know. I could make Tony a co-host again. There is no, there is, there is no turning lane proposed there.
It's not a turning lane that's proposed there. It's a, it's a basically a slightly widened area for people to be able to bypass to the right. It's going to have a twelve foot single lane and a four foot show, a thirteen foot single lane and four foot shoulder, which I think is total seventeen feet, which in traffic engineering terms, you only need sixteen feet to have, be able to bypass safely on the right side if you had to get around. And that's only, you know, a narrower vehicle typically. So it's not a three lane section. It's a two lane section with a four foot shoulder on both sides. That's what it is.
Thank you for clarifying, clarifying that. But the shoulder has nothing to do with passable for passable traffic, correct? It's it's strictly the the two lanes that you just mentioned. One, what'd you say, fourteen feet and the other one's eleven feet?
Thirteen and four feet.
Thirteen.
Thirteen and eleven.
Thirteen and eleven, okay. So, yeah, it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of room to pass. Either way, I I still don't understand how you can, you can have any increase in traffic and be able to, and not having gridlock periodically, let alone, you know, eighteen wheelers. Which are going to use this, right?
Yes, yeah, I would think, Bob. Yes, yes. Do you have anything else for us, Bob?
Yeah, no, I just, you know, the last few guests have echoed pretty much most of my sentiments about, that's not this town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate your participation. And Martha, bless you. Okay. With that said, um, and the board members don't have any additional questions, um, I'd like to kind of just for our board members' perspective, uh, and for the community at large to understand what we're tasked with doing now. So we have a site plan review decision criteria, and I just want to go through that because that is be the tool that's going to help us with our um discussion and decision. So Martha, if you can uh pop that up on the screen.
Hold on a sec.
Yep, I just want to read through each of these. So we can appreciate it together.
All right, can you see that?
Um, yes, but you are going to have to make it larger, Martha.
Yes, I will do my best to do that.
So it's a three hundred percent would be good, I think.
How does, how's that? Does that work?
Oh, yes, we're getting closer to to being able to read it.
All right.
Okay, so, um, yep, and decision criteria. Okay, so, um, okay, so uh this is kind of what helps direct us, and I'm just going to go over this. Our decision criteria, the planning board shall approve an application for site plan review. If it finds that the applicant has submitted sufficient information from which you can determine that the proposed project will A, one, the volume and cut and fill will be minimized. Two, the number of trees removed six inch caliber or larger will be minimized. Three, the area of wetland vegetation displaced will be minimized. Four, soil erosion will be minimized. Five, threat of air and water pollution and traffic congestion will be minimized. Up a little bit, Martha, for me?
Yep.
Okay, and then B, uh, under our criteria, to avoid removal of existing stone walls or where removal is required, minimize length of removal. C, provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with requirements of Newbury's Stormwater Bylaw and the Planning Board's subdivision rules and regulations. D, maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles both on the site and entering onto and egressing from it. E, provide adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency service equipment. F, minimize obstruction of scenic view from publicly accessible locations. G, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises residential use or zoned. H, minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties. I, minimize unreasonable departure from the character, materials, scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. J, prevent containment of can contain contamination of groundwater from any source. K, enhance the appearance of the property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and other site amenities. Martha, you might need to slide it up a little bit for me. L, minimize the impacts of the use on adjacent properties through regulation of hours and operation, deliveries, noise, rubbish removal, and onsite storage. M, ensure compliance with the provision of the Newbury Zone bylaws, including parking and signs. Notwithstanding the above, regulation of the use instructions referenced in GLC forty A, section three, exempts from zoning shall be limited to the extent allowed under said section of the general laws. Okay. Is there anything else we need to go with regards to our decision criteria? That is our decision criteria. Okay.
Right for the site plan review.
For the site plan, yes. Okay. Okay, Martha, I think we're good with screen sharing. Okay, um, so, uh, board members, those are our uh site plan review decision criteria. We've had a couple meetings to uh discuss this. We've uh, we've heard from the community. We've heard from the applicants. Uh, we've heard from a traffic consultant reviewing a traffic study. We have performed a site walk. We've spent time looking at plans and the application. And I'm going to open it up for discussion now to see if the board is prepared to advise the applicant that we might be considering a vote on the application um at our next session of the public hearing. And if that is the case, we'd be directing uh town council and the planning director to draft decisions based upon a sense of the board uh from our discussion. So I just want to kind of get a a feeling from the board as to uh whether you feel that we've had enough information at this point in time uh to to proceed. And George, I'm going to start with you, sir.
Yes, I'm ready to proceed.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm going to now ask Leslie the the same question. Oh, Leslie, I'm sorry you're muted. There you go.
Ready to move forward.
Okay, great. Um, Woody, I'd like to ask you the same question, sir.
I am as well.
Okay, great. And uh, Mary, where'd you go?
Yes, I am ready to proceed.
Beautiful. You keep on moving on the screen on me. I'm telling you.
Yeah. Not my fault.
Okay, great. Um, so I think um, I just want to kind of, now that we we think that we're we're there, I just want to make sure that we kind of discuss each of the criteria in detail. So Martha, can you just, I know I asked you to stop screen sharing. It's the, it's the, 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 the whole day coming at me here. All right, um, so have we addressed the the volume and cut of fill? Uh, I don't think we've had to 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 touch on this uh too much. The number of trees being removed with sixes of caliber or larger, I think there's only two beautiful trees that probably are going to be going for the property. Is that about right, Martha?
Yeah, so it's minimal number of trees on the property.
Yep, yep. Um, I don't believe that we're going to have much in the, in the area of wetland vegetation displacement. Um, and I don't believe we're going to have much in the area of soil erosion. And Martha, if I'm uh missing anything, please point me. With regards to the threat of air and water pollution and traffic congestion, I think we have concerns. And uh, I just want to get a sense from the board if they feel that on A five, there is a concern. So, um, George, what would you say?
Five and A six.
Okay. What would you say, Leslie?
I agree with, I'm going to go with with George on this one, too.
Okay, um, Woody?
Yes, uh, five and six and that, you know, the traffic. And then even I, something I didn't even think about was headlights turning in the facility, shining on the houses across the street.
Yep, I'll get down there in a sec, but you 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 have issues with the two that we're looking at. Okay, and Mary?
Perfect, six.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, let's continue down, uh, removal of existing stone walls and when removal is required, minimize lengths removal. I don't believe there are any stone walls, Martha, correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay, great. Uh, with regards to stormwater management, um, and other uh utilities consistent with requirements of Newbury Stormwater Bylaw and the Plain Boys subdivision rules and regulations, Martha, I don't think we have any issues at this point, do we?
My, my understanding is that Joseph Walker, I mean, he's, he's the one who's really been reviewing this and and uh he feels that that his comments and concerns have been addressed.
Okay.
Martha, may I say one thing? It's Bob Grassel from Ellis. Um, Peter didn't mention that Joseph Walker had reviewed the plan under the subdivision site plan regulations and stormwater management and AL Prime has revised the plans according to all his uh recommendations.
Right. Thank you.
He mentioned that that was reviewed by the uh peer consultant engineer.
Right. We didn't, we didn't mention at this meeting, Bob, we have in the past, but thank you for uh putting on that on the record. Thank you very much for the clarification. Good. Um, okay, uh, next would be uh maximizing safety for pedestrian vehicle both on the site and entering onto and egressing from it. I'm going to go down the the uh the gauntlet again. Uh, George, you have any concerns with regards to this?
I do.
Okay, um, Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
You're talking about D, right?
I I am talking about D, yes.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, right. E is provide adequate access for each uh structure, fire and emergency service equipment. I don't believe that that's a concern. Maximize, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Um, I'm not sure if we're going to be obstructing any scenic views uh with this uh application. Next would be G, minimize the visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and outdoor service areas viewed from public ways and premises residential use or zoned. Uh, George, what do you think about this?
Uh, it's marginal. I'm not really concerned about that.
Okay, great. Um, Leslie?
Minimal, minimal concern.
Okay, great. Uh, Woody?
The same.
Okay, Mary?
No concern.
Okay, minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and light sight lighting and surrounding properties. George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, I'd be interested in ways this could be minimized.
Okay. Next is minimize unreasonable departure from the character material and scale of the buildings in the vicinity and viewed from public ways uh and places. Uh, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Uh, prevent contamination of groundwater from any source. George?
Uh, no.
Okay, uh, Leslie?
Well.
Woody?
No.
Uh, Mary?
No.
Okay, uh, enhance the appearance of the property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscape and other site amenities. Uh, George?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
Uh, Mary?
No.
Okay. Next would be minimize the impacts of the use on the adjacent properties through regulation of hours and operation, deliveries, noise, rubbish removal, and onsite storage. George?
Uh, I could have a comment from Bryant Winner on that particular provision.
Standing by.
Yeah, Brian, I'm just looking at GLC forty A, section three. Uh, how does that apply specifically to that uh comment, that area?
Which section of uh, of forty eight three? Forty eight three is a quite extensive provision, uh, the Dover Amendment.
Forty eight, section three.
Okay, is there a particular provision, though, that that it concerns you?
Exemptions from zoning.
Forgive me, I'm still not following you. Uh, there, there's quite a bit of of language in forty eight three. Is there a specific provision that?
No, not what I was looking for, more generally.
Okay, um, no, uh, in terms of the exceptions under forty eight three, nothing stands out to me is is particularly concerning about this provision.
Thank you.
Okay. So that was George. Uh, Leslie?
I have no problem with it.
We're, we're on, we're on, just as a reminder, we're on.
Which is minimize impacts of the use of adjacent properties through the regulation of hours of operation, deliveries, noise, rubbish removal, and onsite storage. Leslie?
No issues.
Okay, uh, Woody?
I don't have any issues, but it's hard to foresee. You know, with the trash guys there, five o'clock every morning empty, empty in the dumpster, that could be an issue.
All right, so some concern. Uh, Mary?
No.
Okay.
May I ask a question about this? Because this, this goes to regulation of hours of the operation, and they have requested or have indicated that they would be requesting permission to operate twenty four seven. So it seems to me that that would be, you know, come under up for discussion under this, this item. And if the, you know, if, if that's something that should be discussed.
Yeah, that's a good point. I misread this, actually. This, this I am concerned about, obviously.
Okay.
I thought it was other.
Let me revisit it because I I really should have given that a narrative. Martha, thanks for pointing it out to me. So the applicant is requesting a twenty four hour uh
Yeah.
operation. Um, so let me go back to L and I'm going to go, I'm going to read it again. I minimize the impacts on um uh, of Jason properties through the regulation of hours, uh, deliveries, uh, noise, rubbish removal, and onsite storage. So this would be a twenty four hour station with people coming and going, gas coming and going, fuel trucks coming and going. So with that framed, and I know maybe I've directed the conversation, I want to ask people again if they have concerns with that. Uh, George?
No.
Okay, um, uh, Leslie?
No, I think it goes with the twenty four seven. It's just what you have to expect from it, so. No, I don't. Um, I I'm sure that the uh, the abutters and the neighbors across the street are, I I don't know, is there any uh provisions that can be made to that the, those kinds of services can be put into specific hours?
Well, I don't know if we want to get into the business of writing conditions as to when a fuel truck can come or can't come or when a rubbish truck could come or couldn't come. Well, I don't know if we want to get into the business of writing conditions as to when a fuel truck can come or can't come or when a rubbish truck could come or couldn't come. I I think we've learned historically that when we write conditions, as we have for other other situations, they're kind of difficult to enforce. So if it's going to be allowed, it's going to be allowed and we're going to then understand that we're allowing it with no concerns to those. To our guidance. And so does our guidance ask that question?
Okay, so if you can't, you know, I I completely understand what you're saying. So I'm gonna reverse my decision and say, yeah, I have concerns.
All right. Woody?
If as a twenty four seven facility, I could, I have concerns because things could arise with. Some of the things under L.
Mary?
Yeah, I have concerns about this issue. Yes, I do.
Okay, great. I'm sorry I didn't give a better narrative or explanation or bring that point up. Thank you. Next, we have ensuring ensure compliance with provisions of Newbury's zoning by law, including parking and signs. Notwithstanding the above regulations of uses and structures. Okay, so with regards to M, ensure compliance with the provisions of Newbury's zoning bylaws, including parking and signs. So I'm gonna. Ask a question. Martha, at one point in time when we were in our preliminary discussions with this applicant, we were talking about trying to. Make this more residential. Friendly. And where are we with the applicant's proposal and that that concept and that provision?
Well, there are a couple of couple of issues. One was the the building itself.
Okay.
And the applicant has changed the form of the building to be a little bit more consistent with what's what's there. As opposed to their sort of corporate standard and the flat roof and and so on. However, what's being proposed still has the. You know, the AL prime, yellow and white color scheme, which is not something that's consistent with the neighborhood or compatible with the neighborhood. I don't know the the materials particularly are. And I think getting into that, the the lighting that's proposed is something that's that's quite far from. Something that would be consistent with that neighborhood.
So could I ask you to share some images that I thought might be useful? Some image of different gas station lighting and different configuration of Dunkin Donuts appearances? Do we have those images that we that I had talked about?
I do. I'm not sure which one is gonna come up first, however.
That's interesting because I was driving, I went to go visit my mom today. My mom's ninety eight and she was worried about a mouse in the house, so I had to go down to Stonem to look for a mouse in the kitchen. You know what that's like, guys, since we live in Byfield and we have mice everywhere. I was gonna suggest a cat right away, but that didn't go anywhere. So anyways, I was driving back from. From Stonem and I went, I went through Winfield and they have a really nice Dunkin Donuts that you wouldn't even know is a Dunkin Donuts, the way it's kind of laid in and it's, it's actually in a very busy area. It's a very commercial area, but it's a very soft look for Dunkin Donuts.
This is not that image.
This is not that image. This is an image of of a gas station. Which has very controlled lighting. Which is directed downward. There is no big banner in up on top. Comfortable type of look from my perspective. But, you know, you know, we've kind of. Made a nudge in this direction to the applicant to consider something like this, but it hasn't come back in that manner. In Martha, do you have the the second image?
Yes.
Yeah, and so. And this is one that everybody's gonna recognize because it's just down the road from us.
Hold on a sec.
Yeah, sure.
This this may actually be the same one that I just showed.
Well, I can continue the story if I need to.
Yeah, no, this is it.
Okay, so you know, this is the Dunkin Donuts down the road in Rowley. I mean, this fits that neighborhood very well. And this makes sense from my perspective for our community if we're to to look at something like this. And this type of an approach hasn't been. Endorsed or embraced either. So I just, I'm gonna throw those out. Those are all kind of two images that captured my mind. If we're if we're looking at something like this that might make sense as opposed to a typical. Industrial. Environment. In in that kind of neighborhood. So back to that, the last, the last point, if we could, Martha, on our screen share. So. You know, and you know, kind of ensuring that it's compliance with the bylaws and including parking and signs. We have flexibility, I think, and I think we have some ability to see if things fit within our within our environment, within our culture. So I think I'd like to ask if anybody else has concerns with regards to that. So George?
No.
Okay, Leslie?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No.
Okay, and Mary?
No.
Okay, great. So there's no concerns with that that provision? Okay, okay, great. Thanks, Martha. So. Understanding that there's a number of provisions that there are concerns with, as indicated by board members on a quick polling. I wanna, I guess, now ask that question that I was premature in asking because I didn't go through the criteria with you individually. I am sorry for doing that, but I'll ask that question now. If the board seems prepared with a position, and I want to go through just individually again, George, do you have a kind of a sense of where you're at with this?
Uh, yes, I'm against it.
Okay, I don't know if I want to. I leave it up to the each individual member as to whether they want to articulate whether for or against or whether they have concerns with regards to it. Leslie?
I I have some concerns, but they're not overwhelming.
Okay, Woody?
I have, I have concerns.
Okay, and Mary?
Yes, I have concerns.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think I articulated some of my expressions. My, I am very, very concerned over traffic safety. I'm very concerned with buses. I'm very concerned with trucks turning. I'm concerned with the narrowness of that road. It seems that's where the bottleneck occurs, where this applicant is looking to put this. I'm concerned with the fact that it's, yes, it's own highway commercial, yes. And it's right across the street from a bunch of homes and it's right across the street from residential development that has a lot of activity and a lot of connectivity to. I'm sensitive to families. I'm sensitive to children, I'm sensitive to school. I try to encourage the applicant to maybe reconsider redesigning and I've had significant pushback. I've seen projects go in on very steep inclines and been negotiating without problems. So. With that said, I think the applicant has a sense of where the chair sitting. So. If the board is is. Is where we're at, I can, at this point in time. See if you want to have the council, that we direct town council, planning board to draft some decisions based on our discussions. If that's the case, I'd like to ask if you would like that to occur. George?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay. I would do that. So. I would encourage a motion to direct town council planning director to draft some decisions based upon the sense of the board from our discussions. And it's ten a motion.
Motion to council draft. A decision with the information for that has been provided to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, that being the case, George, how say you on the motion?
Yes.
Great. Leslie, how say you on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how say you on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, how say you on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, the chair is in favor as well. That being the case, I probably want to continue this hearing. Martha, would you mind pulling up our spreadsheet? On our availability. I know that we just plopped somebody on in February third. Is that right?
That's correct. Can you see that?
Not yet, but we'll get back to that. Sometimes technology is a little bit slow.
Yeah, no.
Or not corporate at all.
My screen sharing is paused, so let's try this.
Okay. Ah, there you go. Okay, okay, so we are in twenty twenty one. Wow, okay, so we have. Two continuances and we have two continuances ahead. We will be moving forward, so we'll be moving this forward. February third, we'll be going with. Right, okay.
That's too old point. I'm just gonna skip that in here. We don't have a line item, but.
We have three meetings this month, Martha.
I'm sorry?
You have three meetings this month?
Yeah, we've got the golf center and three Newbury Port Turnpike next Tuesday with the select board.
Okay, okay. Do you think you'd be ready with decisions by the twentieth? Do you want to look at the third of the seventeenth? What's gonna work on your agenda based on your on your plate and management of other things that are going on in town?
Well, I think we need to consult with Brian on that as well.
Brian, sir? Are you still with us?
Absolutely.
So are you gonna need a couple, three, four weeks to put this package together?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be reasonable. Any shorter than that, and I I think it'd be pushing up against some other obligations. So if if the board is amenable to allowing that much time, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so we're looking at four weeks into the third, a little bit more is the seventeenth. Do you have a preference, sir?
I do not.
Okay, Martha, do you have a preference?
Uh, not at this point.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest the seventeenth. Just because I I know that there's been some changes in town hall with staffing and I know there are additional responsibilities that Martha has had to take on. Uh, and I know that they're gonna be pulling. So I'd entertain a motion for continuance for the seventeenth of February. At seven fifteen?
I make a motion, we continue the L prime to February seventeenth. At seven fifteen.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Roll call, George?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And Mary?
Yes.
Okay, great. And the chair is in favor as well. Beautiful, wonderful. Tony, so we'll see you again on the seventeenth. Hopefully, we won't have any significant, well, we don't have a snowstorm, that'll be okay. We don't have to worry about snow because we're all at home. So there's the good news. We won't be, we won't be delayed because of snow. And we'll go from there. How's that sound, sir?
It it sounds good, but I have a question.
Sure thing.
Because you had mentioned wanting us to consider to possibly make more changes to maybe to the lighting or the canopy or the building. Layout, but you're also moving ahead with the. Just preparing a draft decision. So I'm not sure, does that mean that you don't want to see anything back from us before you?
Well, I'll I'll be quite honest, our very first meeting, which we held in town hall, I came across pretty strong before we started this discussion that this thing should really fit into the neighborhood. And what you came back with was an industrial strength parking area and facility with strong lighting. And in our discussions, we said, you know, we'd like something that would be more fitting. So there's a hint, there's a hint, there's a nudge. There's been a couple. So if you want to, I, you know, the the hearing's not closed. If you want to ask for a continuance, you want to have us not. Act on this. I think we've we've discussed this quite a bit and your proposal is very strong lighting with the the greatest, you know, wattage possible. So I I mean.
Well, I understand and you've mentioned that at the first meeting, but that you wanted us to fit into the neighborhood and we made a presentation and the only feedback that I've been given has been, we want you to turn the station around and put a driveway in the back.
And we talk about like, we have talked about lighting. We have mentioned lighting.
Well, we we modified the lighting from what we originally had to meet the bylaw amount of lighting. But beyond that, no one has mentioned anything else or mentioned they want some shielding and we we agreed right from the very first meeting. The technical review meeting or the staff meeting that we had that we said we would be willing to do whatever we need to do as far as shielding, so.
Then then what I would suggest is get some new information over to Martha. She's drafting decisions. We haven't voted on the decisions. We're indicating the direction of where we're going. And so you have an opportunity to to supply information. You have, let's see, we have almost six weeks now, so that's a good amount of time. If you want to kind of come back and reconsider and say, hey, this is where we're at now, we want to modify this, that's up to you. But based on what we've been given, this is where we're at. Does that sound fair?
It sounds fair.
Beautiful, thank you so much.
And I have pushed back very strongly because we can't turn the station around and we can't add a driveway in the back and close the front. But we're, and I've said, we're open to other things. I just haven't heard any real comments regarding the other things, so.
I don't, I don't know how else to to. To have you put the project where you want it, where it's at, at the bottleneck of that road. And and make it safe so that. I have a high degree of confidence there aren't going to be an increase in traffic accidents, especially for the residents coming out of that residential area. I'm not convinced about that. Because you have, the road's only so narrow, it's only so wide.
Okay, so the main concern is the traffic, but that goes against.
No, you just heard us read the descriptor, our our criteria, and you heard board members articulate where they have concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll review that and get back to you if we.
Good, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good. Super, okay, thank you. And I think we're gonna go on to. Eighty four Boston Road, and I'm sorry that we've we've slugged this out for. Till nine eleven on our time, folks. I know that I said we're gonna try to stick to forty five minutes. My apologies. I appreciate everyone with their comments. I think their comments are very important. We need to hear them. Because that's what our job is about. And as I started off our meeting today, I'm glad that we can do it. I'm glad that I have the board that I have. Martha, I'm going to read the. Let me pull over here back. There it is. Oh, no, that's payroll. I don't want to do payroll right now. Where'd the agenda go? All right, and it's over here. And there it is. Beautiful, okay. And I want to slide this up here. Thanks, stick with me, folks. It's technology. Okay, this is going to be a public hearing, a site plan review application for a new office building and site contractor storage. For eighty four Boston Road map, R thirty six lot twenty three K applicant K and R Construction Company, owner Slid Road LLC, Kevin Whitney and Ryan Greenwood managers continued from December second, twenty twenty. And so we're gonna put this up at eleven thirteen. George, I I know that you missed the December second. Public hearing and you've submitted your required certification pursuant to MGL chapter thirteen, section twenty three D, stating that you've watched the video. So thank you very much. The chair's gonna ask if there's any new materials from the applicant. Beautiful, and is there anything new? Is it gonna be Kevin? Are you gonna be talking with us tonight?
Yes, I'm representing tonight. Chris York was not able to be available. He had a death in the family, so he had to, yeah, fortunately. He did submit some revised plans that I believe Martha has. I'm not sure if everyone's reviewed them at this time. We do have them available to review right now.
Martha, pop those up on the screen while Kevin talks?
Um, yeah, and actually, the only one I I have, although I can retrieve the others, is the the, he did a section through the site, which we had requested. So that's the one that's available to pop up. But Kevin, perhaps you can talk to that one for other elements. And if you need me to pop up other ones, I'll I'll pull them up.
Okay.
So can I start there? All right, can you see that?
Yeah, you might need to make it a little bit larger if you couldn't, Martha.
Okay, the one issue is that there's a site plan, and then there are the two sections, so I'll make it bigger, but you may not be able to see the entire.
Okay, just for clarification, we did do a sidewalk, what was that date, Kevin, do you remember?
Oh, that was, um, that was a few weeks ago. I don't know the date off the top of my head, I'd have to look that up.
Okay, all right, I do remember it was a little bit muddy.
Yep.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Kevin, what would you like to present to us as, as new information?
Um, so we, basically, we have the plan here with the profile showing the elevation, you can see, if we see the top of the screen there.
Right, let me just point out, there's one cut through the site this way, and another cut through the site this way.
Okay.
Because I know there were some questions about how much cut, how much fill would be done. So, to the left, it shows you, you can see Boston Road is all the way to the left. You can see where the hill bumps up, that's gonna be cut down some, then the building goes there, and then you could see the retaining wall to the right. And then there's the wetlands.
That's through here, so that, that retaining wall is right where the little hand is.
So, Martha, just describe that cut again, so we can appreciate the cut on the left.
Okay, so that's, that's going through from Boston Road to the back of the site, so here's Boston Road on the left.
Yes.
And then, through pavement, the building sits here, so all of, this is, this is the dash line is existing grade.
Right.
And so grade will be cut down to here, leveled out where the building is, leveled out behind the building, and then there's a proposed retaining wall that then goes down, the wetlands are here. These are the existing wetlands in this area here.
So, just so everyone understands, the wetlands are right where Martha's hand was.
Right in here.
Great, okay.
These are the flags.
And just to point out, we are not doing any, any work within the wetland, we're staying outside the wetland buffer with all the proposed work.
And then the other the other section, which is, is cut through parallel to Boston Road. The gravel drive, which is over on the bottom of the screen, you can't see that right now. There's actually, looks like there's there's an elevation change, Kevin, you might be able to explain this better than I can, the building is up, but there's a paved drive. Or is this paved drive here, and then again. So there's a fair amount of fill, is that the case? Is the dash line is the existing topography, existing grade? And the building's actually sitting up.
So the building, I mean, the, the, the profile on the left, so it's just doing a cut where the building is, but the one on the right, I'm trying to get orientation on that, because that's cutting through.
Yeah, because this one, the, the cut line is here.
Okay, oh yeah, so yeah, that would be fill at that point, because that's the downhill side of the site towards the wetland, yes, so that is filled there.
Because this is the high, high point, or a high point in here.
Correct.
So are you assuming, do you think you'll be able to do a balanced cut and fill on the site, or?
It, it, it is pretty balanced, because we're cutting, we're cutting the high area down approximately, I believe about six feet, and, and a lot of that can go right into the low area behind the retaining wall to create a level area overall. It more will mimic the grade of Boston Road, a little bit higher than Boston Road. And if you, if you scroll down your screen, you can see, I believe, the septic system layout is shown on this plan as well.
Is that right here?
Down, down a little bit further, you'll see a rectangular area, just to the left of your cursor.
And this is the only.
Right there.
Yeah, that's what I was pointing out before.
That's the, that's the leaching field area.
And that's the one, that's the one area on the site which would be accommodating for septic.
Yes, unfortunately, that was the only area that, that really worked well for a, for the leaching field to go, so it basically dictates the entire orientation of the building and the rest of the, the rest of the use of the site.
Anything else new for us, Kevin, to discuss?
Well, I do know that Chris had addressed all of the questions from the review engineer. I, I believe he had, he had answered all the questions. I read in the report. Martha has any?
Yeah, he has, so the one remaining question from the, the engineer, and it's something that I need to address with the DPW director is the interface between the grading on the site and the grading that's actually gonna have to happen within the right of way on Boston Road itself. Because there's quite a, quite a level change. And through here.
Yeah, I can't get the one on the screen.
If you could zoom in on that area a bit, where you just had your cursor? So you can see, that's elevation 24 contour line in that area of the parking lot. And then if you can pull it down, you can actually see Boston Road, right where the letter D in road is also 24. So it's, it's not that much of a difference there, it's almost level straight through there. We're actually cutting our property down more to match what is actually on the, the, the existing roadway.
Right, I mean, right now, you're looking at the existing, you've got 30 here, you've got 28 here coming down, you've got 26 that comes down here. And then 24 more comes into, into there.
So we, we'd be removing some of the hump on the edge of the road there, that's what we're proposing.
So Kevin, are there, do you want me to retrieve some of the other drawings and pull them up, or do you think this is enough to?
I mean, I'm, I'm open to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
So I'll, I'll kind of start the, our, our discussion, I know that when we did the sidewalk a couple of weeks ago, a couple of our board members weren't available to to do a sidewalk because of some things that were going on, and I think it's very, very important that all of our members visualize this, and George, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to take you to this area, to this walk, and drive you through it, so you, we can get an appreciation of the topography and of the layout. This is a very rugged site. It's going to require a significant amount of clearing, and probably a blasting.
I accept your offer, Peter.
Say again?
I accept your offer.
Okay, beautiful. And anybody else that wants to come with me, for that matter?
Yeah, Peter, actually, I, I missed the sidewalk, and I'd like to see it.
I did too. Maybe we could do another one.
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of bringing it up, because I think it's very, you know, very important to appreciate what's going on with this.
Yeah, I have, I have absolutely no idea what this is.
So this is, yeah, this is the backside of the storage facility. So if you go to the transfer station, and you look across, speaking of the transfer station, you'll see a construction site, and you'll see where trees have been cleared, that's not actually where the entryway is going to be for this. It's going to be actually a little bit further, so that the, where the, where the area is cleared, Martha, could you just?
It's kind of basically right through here.
Right.
Between, between the two wetland buffer zones, so it comes in about here, goes through where the building will be, and then comes up this way and back to Bill's site, they've been using that as their construction entrance for, for tree clearing and the construction at the next phase of the Newbury South Storage.
So this is the backside of that, and when you walk the site, you'll see that there's, there's a significant difference in road height where this building's going to go. And where the wetlands are, and I'll, I'll tell you, you know, from conservation yesterday, and Leslie, you were there last night. Conservation has some, some questions or concerns, some concerns about this. And I know that Kevin indicated that there wasn't going to be any, any penetration into the wetlands, or there wasn't going to be disturbing, but making a wall and doing that sort of stuff, in effect, is going to disturb the wetlands, and there might have to be some remediation. And that's something that you'll work through with conservation, so I think conservation's gonna have a lot, a lot of questions, and they had a lot of concerns, conservation had a lot of concerns with regards to truck turning, understanding that, and you know, there's a, you know, question raised about potential oil, oil spills and things of that nature, so this is a site, there's a lot going on, on it. And there's only apparently one position that this building can work as it's, as it's proposed, based on where the septic is available, is that correct, Kevin?
Correct, yes.
Yep, and so Kevin, you know, wants to be able to negotiate tractor trailers, and so Martha, did you have the image of the building with the bay, they, they project projection, all that sort of stuff? That was in our, the stuff that we had last week? If not, Kevin, do you have that, that, that stuff?
Yes, I, I do, I'm not, I've never done the screen share, but I do have all the drawings available.
Oh, you're gonna love doing this, what we're gonna do, is we're gonna make you a co-host. And then what you're gonna do is you're gonna go to the bottom of your screen, and there's this little green thing that says screen share.
Yeah, I see that.
You're gonna click on that, and wait a minute, before you click on that, make sure there's nothing on that computer that you don't want us to see, okay? So you just want to have the, yeah, just the images that you want us to see, and that way we can look at those right off as opposed to having files, because you could, you saw it last night, that Bill was having problems with having the, the file show up, and then not having the file page, and then going to the, the actual image.
Okay, so I'll click on the green.
Okay, and we're gonna cross our fingers, we saw blue go to your face.
And then you might need to highlight a file, and then you'll see something that says share, or you might be able to double-click on it.
Yep.
Okay, so I have, I have the set of plans here, I'm not sure if everyone can see them.
Yeah, that's not, they're not showing.
There we go.
There you go.
Beautiful.
So I believe this has been updated, you can see where my cursor is, it has the proposed leach field, the septic tanks.
So what I'm gonna have you do, if possible, if you can make that a little bit larger, and I know that's difficult to do. Because it's gonna be in the zoom feature, if you make it too big, then it like blows off your screen.
Is that better for you there?
Okay, can everybody see that? Okay, so that's, that's what happens, but, so if you can drop that down a little bit, just so we can see the backside of the building. This might be an exercise where you're gonna have to make it smaller, well, so the, how about the, the truck, the truck pulling in, pulling out?
Let me see if I can find that here.
Because that's gonna kind of help folks understand what's going on. And you are gonna have to make that smaller now, yeah.
Bear with me, here's the lighting plan. Have you guys actually reviewed the, the updated lighting plan? He changed it to no more light poles within the parking lot, I know that was an issue. And he went with just a couple wall lights in the building.
Martha, have we, new lighting?
Yeah, we've, we've got that.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was in the, in the package.
Right.
Looking to see if I have that with the truck turning.
It's not, if you can make your, your screen a little bit smaller, then I apologize.
Yep. I don't seem to have that truck turning radius, apologize for that, I thought he sent me everything.
If we can drop your screen size maybe down to 100? That's bottom on your bottom, I think, and it might be where that number, yeah.
So unfortunately, I do not have the turning radius plans, is there any chance you had that, Martha?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I do.
Because actually, conservation had questions about stuff, which was kind of a
All right, so in order for me to try to access it, I'm afraid you're gonna have to stop screen sharing.
Okay. Stop shitter.
There you go, beautiful. That was your first experience with a public hearing, trying to screen share, Kevin, you did pretty good, I don't see any.
Thank you.
Good job.
I know that last night with conservation, it seems that a major issue is they need to, they're having trouble understanding of the amount of space that we're trying to produce and use on the property. I'm not sure how to completely convey that, it's, it's tough to say unless you know how much space a tractor trailer needs to turn and move. It, it is, it is difficult, you know?
Right, I think I should be able to do this, hold on a sec. All right. Nope, wrong one, sorry. Try this again. All right, you got it.
Ah, that's it. Yep, so what this kind of depicts is the one, oops, that one right there, the one on the left, shows trucks coming in, pulling up, and then backing up into, there are two bays that they can actually fit large tractor trailers, and if I'm speaking incorrectly, Kevin, just
You know, you are correct, yep.
And then, that's the only two bays that they can get char, large tractor trailers into. The other bay will be used for smaller equipment, you said?
Yeah, like a standard, you know, Ford pickup could pull in, or, you know, a smaller piece of construction equipment.
So this conservation had questions and discussions about that, and the, the picture on the right is basically what should be fire, would be pulling out from the from the bay, so what else do you want to share with us about this, Kevin?
So we, my, my goal with coming back to you tonight was, I just wanted to go through and, and, and try to answer any, any questions or concerns that the board may have. Because I know that we had a couple updated plans showing the elevations and showing the, the traffic flow there. And I'm trying to just, you know, continue to move forward, I understand that the other board members definitely want to do a sidewalk, and I'm supportive of that, I can definitely be there to help, help guide the, the process.
Martha, do you have anything, any comments at your, at your, at this point, from your perspective?
No, I don't, at this point.
All right, let me just kind of see if anybody has any questions, Larry, you're back, how are you, buddy?
Good.
Excellent, do you have any questions, sir?
I just a couple, I, I, even though I missed the sidewalk, I did go by there today, and I, I was frankly hadn't appreciated how difficult this site is, Kevin, are you gonna have to clear cut the whole thing?
We, we will be cutting probably 70% of the, of the lot, we, we, we won't be cutting the entire lot, because a good portion of it is wetland, as you can see. But, yeah, most of it will be cut all along Boston Road.
There any mature trees that you might be able to save, or hope to save?
I would like to, but it's difficult with the grade changes.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was my, my impression, and lastly, what sort of daily traffic do you expect to generate?
So we're, we're a small company, it's eight employees total, including myself. There'll be, there'll be one to three trucks, large trucks coming and going in the morning, and then coming back in the afternoon, and then a, a couple office personnel. Occasionally, there could be more people working within the garage on, on days that, you know, we won't be in a construction site, but most of the time, the equipment and the men work on construction sites and will not be working in the building.
And what about customers yet, will you have customers coming to the building, or? And what about customers yet? Will you have customers coming to the building or?
We're not a retail kind of thing. Occasionally, there could be a customer coming for a meeting with me personally, but that wouldn't be on even a daily basis, possibly once or twice a month.
So you don't need to, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you're aware that the transfer station is right across the street and they, they get pretty busy three days a week. You don't anticipate any issues there. Traffic issues. I think he's frozen.
Sorry.
He froze.
Yeah.
Did you hear my question?
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't
No, I, I was just commenting that you've got the transfer station across the street, which is pretty busy three days a week. Do you anticipate any issues, any concerns about that?
No, we've actually been, I've been working at the storage facility, doing the site work there. And the traffic, it, there is a considerable amount of cars to go to the transfer facility. But we would actually be, be leaving our facility in the morning before they even open up and we'd be coming back after they're closed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Um, George, do you have any questions or comments or concerns at this time?
After the sidewalk, after the sidewalk, I might. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, thanks, George. And let's see, Woody, since, what do you think, my friend?
I encourage everyone that missed the sidewalk to go to another sidewalk when we have a street available of, of, we work it out because it being, having your feet on the ground there gives you a good idea of what's going on there. And then the only other concern I have, and I'm, I was glad to hear that the pole lighting has been taken off the lighting plan, but with the easement cut that they put through to work on the back of the new portion of self-storage has made it possible to see lights from Newman Road, which is, I would guess three quarters of a mile in a straight line away. That doesn't have a lot of light there now. It has become a semi-popular spot to view stars and view sunsets and full moons and you can now see, because of that easement cut, you can now see three fixtures at self-storage. So lighting is going to be a concern for me because it's just, it, it's something that wasn't there before. I understand it's new and everything, but you can, you can see self-storage now from three quarters of a mile away on so I was glad to see that the pole lighting was proposed pole lighting that's not there anymore. But other than that, that's all.
Okay, great. Thanks, Les. Thanks, Woody. Leslie?
I'm, I'm gonna hold back on any thing until I do the sidewalk. Did, I attend the conservation commission last night. One quick question about hours of operation. Are you just a Monday through Friday facility?
We're Monday through Friday. Occasionally I go in on Saturday just to do some office work.
Okay, great. Anything else, Leslie?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Mary, do you have any questions, Ben here?
I do know.
Okay, super. Great. So I think a sidewalk is, is going to be in order and Kevin, as I indicated to you, you know, this is a, you know, we're starting to bump into kind of wildlife concerns, even though, you know, this is, you know, as you indicated, is zone for commercial use and all that sort of stuff. We do have a significant population that comes here to hunt. And there's no concern with regards to that. So I'm glad that we're, we're looking at, trying to reduce our, our spillage especially in this area as we indicated. Great. So with that said, Martha Taylor?
Yes.
I think we're good with that screen sharing.
All right.
So let's go and we will pick a date for a sidewalk. But I want to see, is there anyone in the public out there that has a question or comment that they would like to ask the board?
Not seeing any raised hands.
Okay. All right, perfect.
I haven't gotten any written comments.
Okay, thanks for, for the clarification. Beautiful. So let's think about a sidewalk date. What's, what's going to work in the world of January?
Yeah, Chris had indicated to me the second half of next week would work, I guess, at his end.
So that's like, what, the 13th, 14th, 15th?
Yes.
Okay, let's just take a gander. Folks, take a look at your calendars. See if we have any anybody going down to Washington for the inauguration? No. Okay, so we're good for that weekend. Okay, good. So 14, 15, anybody have a preference? Leslie, was Tuesday a bad day for you or Thursday a bad day for you?
Tuesdays are my bad day.
Tuesdays. Okay. Martha, any preference on your end? Friday's your day, that Friday's your day going into town hall?
Uh, yeah, Friday is currently my day to be in town hall. Morning is not good for me, but afternoon would be fine.
Okay.
And other, otherwise. Yeah, I think there sort of midday Wednesday or sometime on Thursday would be all right as well.
I can't do Thursday.
Okay.
I can't either. I have to work Thursday.
So we're looking at a Wednesday, folks.
Yeah, or Friday, or Friday afternoon.
Okay. Um, would, so what time sun goes down, 4:30, quarter five at that time? So we still have some pretty good light, 2 o'clock-ish?
What are we talking about, Pete?
Uh, maybe Wednesday, the 13th?
I have a 3 o'clock meeting on Wednesday, the 13th, but I've already seen the site, so I don't really need to be there except to.
I can do a Friday afternoon. That's about all I can do next week.
Okay, we're, we're into Friday, folks. Friday afternoon. Martha? Martha, was Friday afternoon a good possibility for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Anytime after 12.
Um, Leslie, does that work for you, Friday afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, what are you, you nodding up and down?
Yeah, Friday's fine. Now, I've, I've, I went on the first walk, but I
Okay. George? Oops, hold on, I think you muted.
So are you gonna drive George through?
I am going to drive, yes. I will bring George on the walk and I can, I can drive the truck up, you know, and through it to a certain degree. Test out the four-wheel drive and all that sort of stuff.
I drove my Forester through there. Not well advised, but I did it.
Oh, you're so, you braggadocious.
So
So we don't know about George. Everybody else, Leslie, Woody and I and Martha.
And Larry, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Friday afternoon, I'm good.
Uh, George, Friday afternoon, 2:30, 3 o'clock for a sidewalk? I'll pick you up?
Yeah. I'll let you, I'll let you know if there's a problem with that.
That's the 15th, so a week from this Friday.
Okay, so we want to say 2:30, folks?
Pushing it too close to dark?
No, we'll be
How much time do we need?
We'll, we'll, we'll be in and out in an hour.
Okay, 2:30 is good for me.
And then we can get the golden hour and we can all do pictures and all that sort of stuff. Hey, Brian, do you want to come on one of our field walks?
I would love to. I haven't been up in a long time.
Well, you know, all you need up here, a good muck boost. And if you're a size between seven and eight, I can help you out with that.
I'm on my way through every Friday.
All right, it works. It works. So it looks like we have a sidewalk, Kevin, for Friday, the 15th at 2:30. And I will, I will have to drive up, you know, onto your property if that's okay, because I'll have one of my members who's not gonna be up.
That's fine. You can drive right through.
Okay, cool. Great. Beautiful. Um, that being the case, let's pick our date for our continuance, folks. Martha, where be, where we be? So we're, today's the 6th. Do we want to look at February 3rd?
There any chance we can get into the 20th?
So Martha, do you have any concerns about going the 20th? Or does that work on your end? Um, oh, hold on, let me ask you, when are you going back to conservation?
Oh.
Because I think we should be after conference, after them.
Conservation was waiting.
1:26.
1:26.
Big thing for them was hearing if you guys needed to make changes because they said they wouldn't know what they could do without knowing what you decided. I remember them saying that several times last night.
Leslie, did you say 1:26? Okay, so let's go, let's go for the 20th because it will have our sidewalk by then. Sidewalk will be fresh in everybody's mind and then we can hear have concerns expressed from the sidewalk. There are concerns from the sidewalk, so that'll be good for the 26th with conservation. So we'll go for, entertain a motion to continue this until the 20th of January.
Motion for continuance, January 20th for the, for sidewalk for L, Slid Road, LLSA.
So we'd be, we'd be doing the sidewalk, no, we'd be doing the continuing public hearing for the January 20th for 7:15, Leslie?
Yes.
Perfect. Is there a second to that?
Okay.
Okay, great. On the motion, how say you, Larry?
Yes.
Great. George?
Yes.
We're great. Wesley?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel, babe?
Yes.
Excellent. I'm also a good two. Great. So that's what we'll do, folks. So we have a sidewalk and then we have coming back on the 20th because you're going for conservation on the 26th. That work for you, Martha?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, beautiful. Great. Thank you very much. And we'll see you then, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time and I'll see you at the sidewalk.
Great.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Martha, I think we can stop our screen sharing. And where is our agenda? Because I think we're getting noon hour. So we don't have any old business. I don't see any new business. December financials. Oh, Martha. Where are these December financials?
Do you want me to pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. It's a really long one.
Yeah, I think I saw it.
Oh, my God.
So
Budget buster.
Yeah. So Pete, you want to read it or do you want me to?
Uh, okay, so Planning Board Financial Report, December 2020, payroll and invoices, payroll warrants for Tom Planner and planning administration. A PR 21-12 for pay period ending 12/5/2020, PR 21-13 for pay period ending 12/19/2020, Planning Board stipend July 1 through December 31, 2020. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks, Martha.
Uh, let's see, anything else we have agenda wise? So meeting minutes are coming down the road, Martha?
Um, they will be. I wasn't able to
Okay.
do that for tonight. I apologize.
Uh, select board report.
Um, I believe we've talked about the water overlay district for the new report. Number three turn, new report turnpike for retail and residential with parking and and then it was just the rest of it was pretty much business licenses.
Okay, great. ZBA, Larry?
I don't have anything. They're meeting later on in the month.
Okay, Martha, NVPC?
Nothing.
Okay, conservation, we, we talked about the most recent applicant, which was Boston Road. The, that's one, is it one Newberry Port Turn, Turnpike, Arthur, 3, 1, 3? And so that was also presented, so that might be coming back our way. And I think that was it. There was a bunch of other stuff, but I think those are the two pertinent things regarding our world of things. Am I correct, Leslie?
I believe so.
Beautiful. Leslie's my shadow at that meeting. If I forget anything, I can just, you know, ask her. So it's really good. Okay, with that being said, folks, does anybody have anything else? Ah, Martha, I see your hand waving.
Two things. Yeah, so just as a reminder, next Tuesday, we have the Golf Center and three Newberry Port Turnpike continued public hearings. So it's on the 12th, starting at 7:15. Golf Center first. And then for my planning director's report, the only thing we, I received today, a draft copy of the OSRD and definitive plan submission for the 15 Coleman Road OSRD project. So Tom is also pushing to move that one forward, so he's hoping to get that submitted to the board on the 20th. So we'll see.
Good, good, good. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, that being the case, I would love to hear the magical words.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second? Thank you, Leslie. There's a second. And he's a session. Good. I don't see any. Larry, how do you say?
I see you.
George, how do you say, sir?
Yes.
Beautiful. Leslie?
Yes.
Ah, Woody?
Yes, and have a good night, everyone.
Great. And Mary?
Yes, Pete, and thank you, and thank Martha, and thank you guys. It's great to see you all.
Yes, it's wonderful to be together and I'm glad that we're all safe. Thank you, everyone. Brian, thank you very much, sir.
Pleasure. Good to see you.
Arthur, thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.